The meeting will come to order. We will have the opening prayer by Akira Granardo.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Amen.
At this time, we will pledge, we will do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, and justice for all.
For public comment, there is a Google Form signup link in the chat for those individuals who would like to speak, and public comment will take place after non-legislative business. At this time, we will have the reading of the minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna do the roll call. It's my first time up here, so if I blunder, please forgive.
Councilman White.
Present.
Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Fields. Councilwoman Fields. Councilwoman McCoy. Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Field.
Present.
Councilwoman Mills.
Present.
Councilman Spadola.
Present.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Present.
Obviously, President Congo is absent. President Protent Cabrera.
Present.
Nine present and four absent.
At this time, we will have the minutes of the previous meeting.
March 16, 2023, City Council met on regular session with remote participation on above date at 6:30 PM. President Ernest M. Congo II presiding. The opening prayer was done by Akira Granardo, Deputy City Clerk.
Madam President, I move the minutes be accepted as written.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. The minutes be accepted as written. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we will have the City Treasurer's report.
April 6, 2023. Total investment $487,634,501.77. Total cash on hand $12,089,952.35. Grand total $499,724,454.12 submitted by Dwayne Sims, City Treasurer.
Madam President, I move the Treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. The report be received, recorded, and filed. On the question, all in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. I will accept the motion to move to accept all non-legislative business.
Madam President, I move to accept all non-legislative business.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So to begin with, our first, uh, our first.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to be recognized, Councilwoman Fields.
Councilmember Fields, 5th District, duly noted.
Thank you.
At this time, we will have Councilmember Oliver, and she will be recognizing Antonio Robertson.
Okay, I'd like Antonio Robertson and his Riders Motorcycle guest to please come up here, please. And if we have any additional friends or families that like to come up and support him, feel free. Mo, I'm waiting for you. Miss Doris, come on up. Hey, Mo. Oh, man, first I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I see a whole bunch of family and friends. I feel like I could have honored everybody here tonight. I see you, Ms. Pat. Okay, council sponsored, this sponsorship is from Councilwoman Xanthia Oliver, and whereas the sense of City Council to honor those who are deserving of recognition for special attention. Antonio Roberts is one of such individual. Whereas, never far from his motorcycle and his personal road, Antonio, affectionately known as Two Sweets, decided to use his love for bikes and also bring some joy to the youth in our community. In 1988, Antonio established Executive Riders Motorcycle Club, MC, in his hometown of Chester, Pennsylvania. Within a short period, Antonio and Executive Riders, MC, had attracted over 100 members. And whereas the club started attending charity events in different states, including the state of Delaware. They have been very supportive in the children in our community, especially the 3rd District. Antonio and Executive Riders, MC, showed up early each year at Pricey's Park and Kirkwood Street Park to just, to surprise the youth and the people in our community, which included bookbag giveaways, needed supplies for school, and also help with monetary gifts for the 3rd District. Whereas, over 20 years, Two Sweets and his Executive Riders, MC, continue their charity work and have grown over 20 years, over grown over 20 chapters, I'm sorry. Support, support, support. Let's have fun while doing it. He is always Antonio Monto. Whereas Antonio, his hard work and consistency have not gone unnoticed. He has always looked back with pride and has accomplished everything he planned to for his future endeavors. He also owns a club up on Marsh Road. He continues with his success for his future, and he also does bus trips. Antonio has a gift to get people together, seniors, youth, and middle class. One thing about him, he gives back to the community. When he came here, he called me, him and his wife, and says, "Xanthia, what can we do in the 3rd District?" I said, "Well, I do something at Pricey's Park." They came over and gave me a check for $500, and since then, they've always given back to the community. That's why I go up there and support his club every now and then. Now therefore be resolved by the Council and the City of Wilmington that this legislative body would like to congratulate Antonio Roberts and his members of the Executive Riders Motorcycle Club. Job well done. Thank you.
First, give an honor to God. You know, I learned that, uh, God said, "Be ever so ready." I've been asking my wife, since she told me that Sister Oliver wanted to honor me and my family, what's going on? She never would tell me. For me to be in this here place, it was, it's, it's a place that God wanted me in this space. And I'm glad to be here. I accept my honor gift. And I just say thank God, you know, sometimes you wake up and you, you wake up with a heavy heart. You never know how the day gonna end. I stand here to tell you today, I stand here with a heavy heart. This makes me happy. Thank my family. Thank the staff. Thank everyone.
Mr. Antonio, I just also wanted to thank you for everything that you have done in the community, uh, for reaching out, and we just appreciate that you all come together as a family to help so many families, so many youngsters, and, um, job well done to all of you, and I want to get a ride.
Um, I would like to say thank you, just thank you to the community here, because we're not from here, but we have come here to make this our new home. And we want to do exactly what we were doing in Chester, down here in Delaware, and that's support. So I thank you again.
Okay, I'd like to thank all the bikers, and y'all have a good weekend. Happy Easter. Thanks again.
Can I be recognized for a moment?
Sure, go ahead.
Yes, hi, this is Councilwoman Fields. Um, I just want to say to my big bro, congratulations. Um, I apologize for not being there, but you know, I love you, I love you and Bo. I love the family, and I'm just glad that, you know, you are giving your flowers now while you're still living. Um, I have to come see you, and you are a man of your word. And, um, even though you don't come over to the 5th District, wink, wink, you're supporting the 3rd District, and you're just giving back to the community, and I think that was key. And, um, you and your wife have always shown, um, love and always questioned, what can't you do for the community? So you've never stopped, um, putting that question out there. So, um, you know, I appreciate you, just, you know, you and your organization for just doing what you do, um, in the 3rd District, because that spreads love, um, throughout the entire city of Wilmington. Congratulations, big bro. Congratulations, congratulations, and I will see you this weekend.
At this time, I will call Councilmember Michelle Harley. She will be presenting this honor on behalf of President Congo.
Good evening, everyone. I am going to ask that the Sanford High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team please come at this time. And. And while they're making their way, um, to the podium, I just want to say that, um, I am totally, absolutely proud of this varsity, uh, basketball team. I know that, I believe this is like the sixth championship I think that they have won. And it is an honor, and it is a pleasure for me to present this recognition to you tonight on behalf of our Council President Ernest Trippi Congo II. Whereas, it is the sense of City Council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. The Sanford High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team merits such a distinction, and the Sanford Warriors claim the 2023 Delaware Interscholastic Athletic Association Girls State Championship title, the sixth state championship win in the school's history. And whereas, these players have shown exceptional talent and resilience, the Warriors finished the 2022-2023 season with an undefeated record against in-state teams, 20 wins and three out-of-state losses. That's deserving of a hand clap. Despite having their four-year careers shortened by the pandemic, the team's seniors have a 72-10 record with only five losses against in-state teams. And whereas, the final free throw of the championship game marked 1,000 career points for Max Preps and Delaware Sportswriters and Broadcasters Association Players of the Year. Dallas Pierce, Dallas and Zai Kilgo were selected for the DSB-A All-State Girls Basketball First Team, and Jada Snow was named as an honorable mention. Seventeen members were recognized as Delaware Independent Schools Conference All-Conference Players. So, now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this Council is pleased to recognize the Sanford High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team, along with Head Coach Marcus Thompson, Association Head Coach Courtney Kendall, and Assistant Coaches Clifton Wise and Tracy Bodie for their extraordinary performance. Job well done. And again, team and coaches, congratulations on your sixth championship. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, the person in charge to share some comments, and you can allow whomever else you would like to share comments as well.
Thank you. Well, uh, first of all, I say it's an honor to be here. As a kid who grew up across the street, and I say across the street, I mean, across the street, uh, 9th and Walnut, um, prior to easy in Mount Carmel when it was a, a pond in the back. I don't know if people remember those days. This is a blessing. I also grew up almost in this building, as my mother was the Personnel Director for Mayor McGlocklin. I used to peer out the eighth, I think it's the eighth or, eighth or ninth, she'll probably correct me when I get home. But, uh, eighth or ninth floor, and I know how important it is and all of the work that is done in these chambers. So I am certainly appreciative of you guys bestowing this honor on our team. As we all know, and I, I know many people in here have been involved in sports, there are life lessons in sports. And we are fortunate enough to learn a lot of them this year. And I'm not going to sit here and talk you to death. I'm going to bring up the captain, she's going to speak for just a minute or so, and then I'm gonna get these young ladies back to doing some homework and probably some AAU practice.
On behalf of our team, I would like to thank you for recognizing us today. We are grateful to be allowed in the chambers. We know the values and experiences that we learned this year are the same skills and tools you use to help God, the City of Wilmington, um, to be its best. These two are the same skills we use as we enter college and young adulthood. Thank you again for this honor, and we hope our team will one day soon be here again, because as we say in Sanford, uh, tradition never graduates. Thank you.
So once again, uh, young ladies, um, the City of Wilmington is very, very proud of you um, for your hard work and your dedication to earn this title. And I just want to say that I am a part of the Sanford family, my grandson Beckham Conkey. I'm gonna make sure that when he sees you, I'm gonna take your picture, make sure that he gives y'all a bump, okay? All right, all right. Again, congratulations. Thank you.
You can remain, we have a couple Councilmembers that want to make comments.
No, I'd just like to give my congratulations, um, for your, um, achievement. Uh, everybody's talking about y'all, y'all been all in the paper. I said, "Look at them girls, they rock." But I want you to know, you could be whatever you want to be, and congratulations to you all. Y'all did a fabulous job this year.
I would also like to add that you could one day be a Councilwoman, being that I also played basketball, and I made it to the championships. Unfortunately, our team did lose to St. Simon in June. I was in St. Agnes, uh, by two points. Otherwise than that, we would have been the champions. So, uh, basketball is near and dear to my heart, and there are life lessons to be learned. So congratulations, and, uh, one day I may see one of you here as well. Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you so much for coming, we're so very proud of you. And while the ladies are working their way back to, um, back home to do that homework, we now want to recognize Martha Chapter Number Two with their 101st anniversary. Ladies and gentlemen, come forward.
So while this awesome chapter is making their way to the podium as well, um, I just want to say thank you, uh, for your service down through the years. As I was reading the information that was submitted, um, I had no idea that y'all have been at this over, uh, 100 years. So this recognition is definitely, um, worthy, uh, tonight, and your organization is most certainly worthy of this honor on tonight. Um, as I see different faces that I recognize, Pat and some others, and I believe, um, Trina. And I didn't, I didn't know some of these ladies that are a part of this organization was a part of the organization, but I do know that they are servants, and they are out in the community. I see them out in the community, but I didn't know that they were a part of this organization. And I know that this madam right here is one that, is the one that, um, submitted this information, um, along with her other, um, sister right there. And I just want to say thank you for making us aware so we could give you the honor and bestow the honor unto you that you are due. The sponsor is Councilmember Michelle Harley. Whereas, it is the sense of City Council to honor organizations that have demonstrated outstanding achievement and are deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Councilmember Michelle Harley wishes to recognize Martha Chapter Number Two, Order of the Eastern Star for 101 years of service to our community. Martha Chapter Number Two, Order of the Eastern Star's Warrant and Charter were approved, authorized, and conferred by the St. Matthews Grand Chapter of Delaware on March 15, 1922. Martha Chapter Number Two also submits under the auspice of the Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Delaware. The Order of the Eastern Star is an organization that is steeped in tradition and has a long history of community service. And whereas, Martha, Chapter Number Two prides itself on being a humanitarian order of the Eastern Star Chapter that provides charitable community services to the surrounding Wilmington community. The membership has served meals at the Emmanuel Dining Hall and the Epiphany House, supporting local organizations and initiatives such as Ronald McDonald House activities, South Bridge Neighborhood House donations, Adopt a Highway cleanup, and many Thanksgiving and Christmas charity events are just some of the ways in which they continue to live the mission to make a positive difference in the world with charitable works, lasting friendships, and loving kindness to all mankind. And whereas, Martha Chapter Number Two has recently begun meeting at the South Bridge Neighborhood House under the current leadership of Worthy Matron Valerie Henderson, Worthy Patron Larry Maron, Past Matron Emma Stanton, President Past Matron, Past Patron, Council and Past Matron Hansella Zell Cannon, Vice President Past Matron, Past Patron, Council. Their dedication to the community is admirable and worthy of recognition. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this Council is pleased to recognize the Martha, Chapter Number Two, Order of the Eastern Star for their 101 years of service, and wish them many more years of continued progress and service. Job well done. Let's give them another hand for your service and your dedication for 101 years. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the representative to share comments, and whomever else you would like to share comments as well.
Good evening. My name is Emma Stanton, I am a past Worthy Matron to Martha Chapter. Currently, I serve as the President of the Past Matron, Past Patron Council. To Councilperson, Most Honorable Michelle Harley, along with the Wilmington City Council, thank you for acknowledging Martha Chapter. It is indeed a pleasure and an honor to be here. I'd like to take the opportunity and introduce our current Worthy Matron, which is Sister Valerie Henderson. Valerie Henderson. And also would like to introduce our past Worthy Matron, Sister Zell Cannon. She is the Vice President of the Past Matron Patron Council. It is indeed our dedication and commitment that has brought us this far. Please know that our dedication and commitment is ever unwavering and I thank you for the time and support that you've given to us.
My name is Isaac Marsh. I am the Most Worshipful Prince Hall Grand Master of the Most Worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge of State and Jurisdiction of Delaware Incorporated. Martha Chapter is part of our organization. Everything falls under the Grand Lodge. These ladies, without them, we could not function as well, of course. I mean, Prince Hall Mason is basically a male organization, but we have adopted bodies and the chapter is one of those. They do, the information you read is they do constantly, but they also contribute financially to the Grand Lodge and we do as much as we possibly can within the community. We're a small organization compared to other jurisdictions, but we do everything possible we can to contribute with endowments, with scholarships, with feeding the needy and assisting as much as we possibly can. And we could always use some new members. We're not supposed to recruit, but just in case. We're organizations that, just like others, have been established, the Grand Lodge of Delaware has been established since 1849. We're celebrating 174 years here this June. So we're doing something right, but membership could increase because the younger generation don't want to follow rules and regulations that's required as a Master Mason or an Eastern Star. But if you have someone who's dedicated, who's willing to work, then we're here to assist and try to make better men and better women throughout the organization. And thank you, council, for this recognition of 101 years of this fabulous work. And hopefully they will continue to do as much as they possibly can within their, within what they can do based on what they receive, because you can't do this without some income and some work. All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, I'd like to say a few words. I remember this organization for many, 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 many years and thank you, Councilwoman Harley, for honoring them. I know most of y'all in this, I know my aunt was one of the lodges. I remember Mr. Isaac from Fifth and Dupont, y'all go way, way back. So Val, Ms. Cannon, Ms. Stanton, I mean, Pat, all of y'all, it's just an honor to see y'all still active and I mean, it's a pleasure. So kudos to all y'all and I stand on y'all's shoulders and God bless you all. Thank you so much. I thought you was going to sing tonight. Okay.
I too would, I too would like to thank you for everything that you do as an organization in our community. And as we see organizations like yours, you do need recruitment. We need others to come to continue to be around 101 years. I mean, the members have been around for a long time, but they're not going to live forever. So we need to make sure that others also step up and join. And if you stay in the organization long enough, you can also get to wear a handsome hat like this gentleman has right here. So, but thank you. And I also want to say this organization is very lucky because they have their own in-house meteorologist, Ms. Pat, who can foretell the weather. She knew that that tornado was coming last week. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Yes, and I just want to say one thing because I know my older sister Beverly, she would really, you know, give me a hard time if I did not mention her name. My older sister Beverly is a member of this organization and I supported her, our family supported her many years in the crab feast and all the different fundraisers that the organization and the chapter sponsors. So I will definitely make sure that we get a picture before you move. So we're going to get a picture with your resolution and for 100 over, what's that? That's a century, right? A century, so it's worthy of a picture. You agree? Let's give them a hand. Let's give them a hand.
We also have, excuse me, one second. We also have Councilmember Darby who would like to make a comment and she's online.
Sure.
No, I'm sorry. No, congratulations on your award and being around this long, but I haven't been recognized. I was raising my hand to be recognized.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you. Let's go for that picture.
Madam President?
Yes. Councilman White?
It's with deep honor and pleasure to be, you know, my heart is about to jump out of my chest. I know this group firsthand and the fact that whatever's on that proclamation is a small piece of what you do and how much you contribute. And it's not so much what's on the, what's on the resolution, but it's what's in each one of your hearts.
That's right.
And it's powerful and the community may never know how much you're able to do and our small token is just a little bit, but keep up the work. And let me say this, for those of you who don't know, in this organization, the women are in charge.
In most.
The women are in charge.
In most.
Since you said that, and I was going to say, my segue is they've trained me very well when this environment where the women are also in charge. So it's good preparation, but just can't say enough about you and bless you, bless you all.
Madam President?
Councilman Mills?
You have to excuse me. I just wanted to say to the ladies, thank you for keeping up the tradition, Godspeed, and you can feel the excellence in the room and thank you. And you are what our young ladies need, more of this in our community. So God bless you, Godspeed, continue the great work you're doing and thank you so much.
Normally in this organization, the last person that speaks is me, so they threw me out front first today, so that means nobody speaks thereafter. But I forgot to recognize the leader of the Order Eastern Star at St. Matthews Grand Chapter, which is the Grand, is the Grand Worthy Matron. Marcia Perry. I started to call her by nickname. And the gentleman here is Frederick T. Norman, which works with them. He's the Grand Worthy Patron. All right, thank you.
So Michelle, you want to take a picture? So we want to take a picture because we got to keep going, Pat.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Worthy Patron, but they named him Larry Maron.
Pat, we got to get a picture, we got to keep moving.
Madam Chair, can I say something? This is Councilwoman Fields.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes, I'd just like to say congratulations. I know what it is firsthand to be a Eastern Star. My mother, my entire family, all women and my grandfather, we're all Eastern Stars and Masons. I am a daughter of Isis and our lodge used to be on Seventh and Washington. So I commend you all, I thank you all, you are our leaders and it is time for the younger generation to come in and, you know, just learn something so that we can go ahead and take the baton and move forward. I am not active and I haven't been, but I just thank God that you all are still active and doing what you're doing in the community. I know what it is to be a part and it's nothing like a family, but you are definitely strict, you don't play no games, and order is order. And that's where I learned the rules of order when I first joined up, the Eastern Stars. So thank you and continue the good work. Love you, Ms. Pat.
She said thank you. At this time, I would also like to recognize the resolutions that were, that were given out within the community. Councilmember Bracy recognized Lawrence Smith for his 70th birthday. Council President Congo recognized Canaan Baptist Church for their 20th anniversary. Council President Congo also recognized Rock of Ages Missionary Church, 100th anniversary. And also recognized Reverend Ricky Waterman and First Lady Waterman. Councilmember Fields recognized Dr. David and Bernadette Mills. Councilmember Harley recognized Darlene Webb for Women's History Month. And Councilmember Oliver recognized Jill Scott and Lance Tumer. We also have sympathy resolutions from all of council for Audrey Books, all of council for Michael P. Wash, from Councilmember Cabrera, Donna Doersback Stone, and Alice Thomas. Councilmember Oliver sympathy resolution for Ashia DeCal, Bishop Johnny Boomer Senior, Tanya L. Lee, and Carolyn Taylor Gale. This is a friendly reminder for public comment that there is a Google Form signup link in the chat for those individuals who would like to speak. The time limit is three minutes. Please keep your comments relevant to the items on tonight's agenda and please address the President Pro Tem directly at this time. Oh, and we also wanted to add the resolution for Antonio Robertson, who we did recognize this evening. Oh, and Mike Walsh was not on the agenda, those two were added to tonight's agenda. And Queen of Hearts has been removed from the agenda and they will be recognized at a future date and Mr. Fred Bourbon will also be recognized at a future date. At this time, we are going to proceed to public comment. We will start with any members that are here in the room and then we will go to online public comment. Is there anyone signed up for public comment here this evening? Let's start with Mr. Earl Deacon Earl E. Tate, the third or the second. Either way, in our eyes, he's the first.
Yes, he is.
Words of wisdom is coming at you.
Good evening. Good evening there, folks. I like, I like to say that I'm here representing, representing the, 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 the popular, the public because I'm here representing the kids as well as the adults because, because now it's coming to time when, when the kids are outside playing and everything and the kids are going to need some safety, going to need some safety where, where, where they could come out and play and not have to worry about cars coming by, drivers coming by hitting them and going off, going off, leaving them, leaving them laying down, laying there. That's what I come and say, they're fixing up the streets now and, and everything, even though, even though, even though they, even though they can't put the speed bumps everywhere, hey, plus, 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 we got to have them, we got, we got to have them put the, put something out there, put something out there to make, to stop, to stop these speeding drivers from driving, from driving by, the stop sign, not, not paying any attention to the stop signs and so forth. So, so we need that, we need that too because, because, because the kids, the kids are our future and our future is now. So we got to take good care of our kids because our kids are, are our kids won't be here to take care of us when they, when they get of age. So we got, so we got to be here. And, and I, and I like to finish it with this, with this poem of mine, "Respect." To, to the men of this world today, we, you, you have, you have lost, you have lost the sense of respect that, that you was taught when you was growing up. We had, we had, we had taught, we was taught how to respect ourselves first and then others too. We, we called, we called the seniors sir and madam. And, and how, and how we wore our pants, how we wore our clothes as though they fit us to the T. Well, you see, what, what we, what we learned then should, should still remain with us now because we, we, we set a big example to, to the youth that is looking up to us. They, they, they follow, they follow every footstep and, and dress like, like us. So, so that, so that, so, so let, so let us dress with our pants up to our waist and not, and not down beneath our butts. I like to say, have a happy Easter, everybody. Remember what Easter is all about.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Deacon Tate. At this time, can we have Elba Castaneda come forward? Just a reminder that you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Consular Members. My name is Elsa Castaneda Cruz. I am a member of C U 32B. Up until the, last December, I worked as a contract, a cleaner, CSC, compers service for a company called Allen Industry. On December 16, 2022, my boss, Allen Industry, told me that our last day of work will be December 30, 2022 because they were unable to renew their contract with the building I worked in. My company was replaced by a non-union contract chair up, the same cleaning contractor for this very building and not one of us were offered to keep our position. After years of serving and staying on the job through COVID pandemic, being co-heroes and semblance workers, we were treated as disposable and right for, right before Christmas. My family is fair, the most important things to me and my cleaning job is how I did my part of financial support, my two beautiful children and our dog, along with my husband. My husband has a steady job, but he pays, in this economy, it's not enough to cover all our monthly expenses. So I took great pride and worked hard to make sure that we had, as a family, had things that we needed. We were getting by and able to cover our mortgage bills and other necessary for our kids and up until before Christmas. It was terrible news for me as not only, well, my family had to struggle to pay our living expenses. I will not be able to provide my children's with a central Christmas celebration until, instead of buying a few gifts and a nicer meal, I had to save, save what a little money I had for bills, insurance, et cetera. That will be due again soon. I have been unemployed and looking for a job that works around my children's school schedule. Wilmington currently has not displaced a worker law to help protect hard workers, people like myself, from having our livelihood pulled out from under us at very little notice. I encourage you, the City of Consular of Wilmington, to pass this to pass displaced worker legislation immediately to help and protect our workers' family like me for being left in the cold of year before Christmas this year.
Thank you, and have a good Easter.
Thank you. I like to, I like to say something. I just like to say, it was good you had the courage to come here and say what you said. But if you go to the Department of Labor, I just was up there and just look, and they have some jobs that you may be interested in, and they just put a whole new post up.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hector, I'm the representative for 32BJ Service Employees International Union. Want a minute?
Well, we'll give, we'll give him a few minutes. Yeah, we'll give you a few seconds, talking to the mic.
Give me a minute. So basically, what we want to do is if you guys can support us, right? And passing a bill, Displaced Act bill that can protect workers when this happens, right? So basically, that means at the end of the day that this wouldn't happen again. And these workers will not be a disposable waste at the end of the day and be out there on the holidays looking for work, right? So if you guys want to support us on this, we can follow up. We got Emily, our communication person there. If you guys want to speak on behalf later on, we can do that. And also, we have flyers for you guys if you want.
We have your contact information on here, Elbas, and we'll make sure that we have.
Thank you very much.
Follow up with you, thank you. At this time, Calvin Davis Jr.
Hello, my name is Calvin Davis Jr. I'm a client of Connections, CSP, or Connectio Care. And I live in the second district on 2307 North Harrison Street. And I came to represent my neighbors. A, a new realty company took over. Apparently, some new developers bought up a lot of land in our district. And a lot of, the rent went up, and it went up $300. And it's not, it's, 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 it's not making everyone happy. And they're not repairing anything or maintaining the grounds, but the rent has gone up. We say that we stand for the people, and it's time for us to be a voice for the people and do something about what's happening to us. Because we're, we're hurting, we're, we're, we're trying our hardest to survive in a world where it just seems like the other people get the breaks and we don't. It seems like a lot of the money that is earmarked for our communities are redirected and, and, and put into other projects that don't benefit the residents of the community that was affected. So I just think that we need to do a better job protecting the citizens who are supposed to be a protected class. And I thank y'all for y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'd have Brother Dwight L. Davis.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Members of Wilmington City Council, citizens of the City of Wilmington this evening. My name is Dwight L. Davis. And I am representing the Masjid Al Kalthar Muslim Center of Wilmington, located at 2102 Northeast Boulevard. We're in the 15th day of our Holy Month of Ramadan. Those that have heard know that approximately 2 billion Muslims throughout the world are observing the Holy Month of Ramadan by fasting from the sunup to sundown. And in the evenings, after we break our fast and have our wonderful meal, we are participating in additional night prayers. You may be aware that Muslims in this city and in this county and in this state are participating in good works all throughout the city and the state. So we are greatly appreciative to be a part of the three major religions, Al Islam, Christianity, and Judaism. Because it is so important in these days and times that we put God first. And so we put God first. We recognize God by rising 4:00 a.m. in the morning and giving worship to Him. If you say you believe in a one God, in God, the way you demonstrate that, the way the Muslims demonstrate that is by saying that there is no God but God. La Ilaha Illallah, Waduh La Sharika La, that He is one God. He has no associates, He has no partners. And then we fast, we pray, and we giving charity in various ways. It's not just money. So I just wanted the world to know, the city to know, that at 2102 Northeast Boulevard, when you ride up and down Northeast Boulevard uh, uh, in the evenings, you will see our parking lot full of those who are worshiping the one true God during this Holy Month of Ramadan. So thank you, Madam President and Members of City Council, for this opportunity to stand in your presence and not be ashamed to honor and pray to the one true God. Thank you very much. Assalamualaikum, warakumullah, ta'ala, wadabatikatu, Ramadan mubarak.
Thank you, Brother Dwight. And if we could have Stacy Henry make your way to the front. Since we have two more speakers, and we may go beyond 7:30, which is when we are required to start our legislative process at 7:30 on the dot. Can I get a motion to extend public comment?
Sue move second.
It has been properly moved and second to extend public comment. Shouldn't take us too much longer, but we will. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, City Council, City of Wilmington. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to take a few moments of your time. I would first just like to read something to you. Climate change is happening now according to the national reports. And we have noticed over time that our seasons are running together. Storms are happening more often. And we here in Wilmington have a need to do and to say something about our community. The group that's here with me today, we decided that we wanted to be a part of the solution and not a part of the problem. September 2, 2021, our city northeast was hit with a flood from Hurricane Ida. Residents were without homes, food, shelter, and just someone to understand their issues. Today, there are still several families that are still displaced because of that. That was part of climate change. And there's a new global movement called a resilience hub. The ladies that you see standing behind me have been to meetings, trainings, along with myself. And we are forming, or we have formed, a resilience hub here in Wilmington. Our closest resilience hub is in Baltimore, one in Virginia. And the training that I've been doing is in Massachusetts. If you're not quite sure what a resilience hub, think of the word resilience. When there's a flood, when there's a heat wave, when there's a disaster. We witnessed one of our communities here that did not have the resources that they need to survive through that flood. And our resilience hub is going to educate, train, and support not only northeast. This is the first phase of what we're doing. But hopefully, we'll be able to set up other hubs in other areas in the city. The resilience hub is, this resilience hub is grassroots. These are all residents of the City of Wilmington who decided they wanted to be a part of the solution. And we've done a lot of work. We've met folks that are coming along with us. Training is something that will continue to happen. In our hub, there'll be many things that we'll have available. We're not going to take the place of emergency management, FEMA or DEMA. We are going to be frontline for immediate, immediate resources, immediate plans, immediate partners, so that our residents, our neighbors, will not have to go without food and shelter and other things that they need. And I'm standing here today, I know there's a lot of communication going on about why I did what I did, and it doesn't matter why I did what I did. But when I met with the young ladies, we, we decided that we had to do something. We had a public meeting on the first at the Powell Center. And we'll be having another public meeting on the 29th at the Powell Center to invite the community to come in to help us with this project. Not only help us with this project, be a part of learning. We did a short survey in Northeast to ask residents, do you know your evacuation plan? None of them knew their evacuation plan. We asked them other questions related to disaster and what you would do in the time of disaster. Those things are not available to them. So we're going to make sure those things are available for residents in case of any type of disaster, not only a flood. We also, we, we're asking, we're coming here today, asking the public to come out to the meeting, learn about a resilience hub, learn about climate change. And we're also charging each city council member, we have some flyers here, large flyers. Take it, post it up in your community. This is important. We cannot wait until the next disaster before we do something. We have to be prepared. Our immediate project that we're doing is we're putting together 100 disaster kits. These disaster kits will have what the families need in case of a disaster. We did receive a grant from the EPA, and the EPA.
Please, yeah, finish your comments.
Okay, the EPA is supporting what we're doing along with some other, uh, community partners.
Thank you. Thank you for all that you do.
Okay, time is up. Thank you for coming. I'd just like to say something. I'm just glad y'all put, oh, public comment, no, I can't say that. I keep getting mixed up with the other thing.
We, we will announce this during petitions and communications, thank you. At this point, we can have the next speaker, which is Shania Pierce.
Hello. Hi. Um, it's an honor to be here. I'm a part of the resilience team in the Northeast District, the third district. I have friends who was actually devastated by the, the water flood and everything. And I actually was taking my car down to the, to the mechanic place. And I didn't leave my car there because it was raining. And I was like, the gentleman wasn't there, so I said, I'm gonna take my car home. And then friends called and said, is your, do you have your car? And I was like, did you leave your car? And I said, no, I have my car. And I was like, why? And then he showed me pictures of the flood. And I actually went down there and I met some people that was there during the flood. It was not good. I spoke to a friend of mine today, I was with her today. She's going to come to the next meeting because she said she was one that had to be rescued by the boat. And she hadn't even been in her house a year. And she said it didn't cover a lot. And they was getting a runaround, they would, you know, call who they were supposed to call, but they just kept giving them the runaround, or they just was speaking to or recording. And another gentleman who is also a Habitat for Humanity resident, he also said that he was, it was very bad for him as well. And like Stacy said, that these people didn't have food, they didn't have no warning, you know, that the floods was as bad as it was. One of the gentlemen who was a store owner, I spoke with him also. He lost thousands and thousands of dollars because of the flood. He's, has a, what is that, a, the, he's an art, he sells arts and everything. And he said he went to New York to get some more artwork. And I said, well, why did you leave? He said, it wasn't, it wasn't as bad or whatever. So he was devastated, he was like, I'm, I'm gonna leave, you know, I'm just gonna leave. But he wound up coming back, he was just gonna close his business and everything now. So many people's just devastated. I met a lot of people on that, I don't know the name of that street. But a lot of them said that they had FEMA come by there. And they said, we're gonna have to be brutally honest, we have to give the money to the landlord. And the landlord didn't really help them at all. I know of other people whose refrigerator and stove and everything was floating in the water. And it just was really bad. And they said that they did not get the help that they need. And as Stacy also said, that one young lady was, you know, she needed help, and they put her in a hotel, and then she was in a hotel. But somebody did something to her that she was affected, where she's in a wheelchair now. She's actually in a wheelchair. And it was already bad enough that she, you know, lost her home and everything. And then to get attacked, and now she's in a wheelchair. And she's in a place now, and I believe she's in a place now. But she doesn't feel safe in the place that she's in. A lot of these people were very upset that they didn't get the help that they need. So we would like, while we're here today, is we would like to, for a bill to be passed to help us to do what we need to do, to make sure that that doesn't happen again, to have the supplies, make sure everybody's aware, knows where they need to go to get the resources and things of that nature. So that's what the Northeast Resilience Team is all about, trying to make sure everybody's aware. And my time is up.
Thanks.
Thank you. The next person, it will be Mr. Donald Farrell. Thank you for joining us in person. We had you down virtual, but glad to see you in the flesh.
First off, I'm afraid to touch this because my last contact with this was, it was kind of crazy. But first off, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Don Farrell, and I am a third district resident on the east side of Wilmington. I'm a landlord, and I'm also a lead poisoning prevention advocate and chair the primary prevention subcommittee of the Childhood Lead Poisoning Advisory Committee. First, I want to say, there is no safe level of lead. Now, because the housing stock in Wilmington was built before 1978, many homes contain lead, thereby exposing children to lead exposure that deprives them of the right to live in a safe, healthy environment. And this condemns many to decreased IQ, unrealized potential, and behavioral problems which fuel the school to prison pipeline. So I'm here today to ask you to support the Resolution 0289. Chronic exposure to lead not only puts children at risk, but adults as well, causing high rates of hypertension and kidney disease. I want to say that it's not just salt, but chronic lead exposure. So all of us are at risk, children. So all of us are at risk, children and adults. So by voting for this resolution, you are making a statement and you're sending a strong message that Wilmington supports protecting children, students, and staff in daycare facilities and schools from the risk of unnecessary exposure to lead tainted drinking water, which is caused by aging infrastructure, old facilities, and equipment. By supporting this resolution, you are supporting transparency in the testing process and the protocols. And you're also supporting easy to understand results in a readable format and notification of results in a timely fashion. By voting for this resolution, you are supporting the right to study, work, and live in an environment free of lead that's in water or from paint. So I ask you to support this resolution and stand with the children and for a lead-free environment. Please support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will move on to legislative business. We will dispense from calling each council member's name for legislative business. Councilmember Darby.
Yes, um, President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 23016, Agenda 0289, whereas 16 Delaware Law, See 26 to Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Act.
I move this resolution be received and recorded and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Can we get a second?
Second.
It has moved in second, and we will vote, uh, on the question.
Yes, um, so, mic drop. The last public comment was Mr. Donald Farrell, who spoke to this legislation um, in regards to the impact that lead has had, can have on our children in the city of Wilmington. Uh, we know most recently there has been lead detected in several of our schools throughout the state of Delaware. But most importantly, for the city of Wilmington, a lot of our city schools that our kids attend have been impacted by, um, lead, um, being in the water. And trying to understand what that impact is and what is the next solution. I want to thank the advocates like, um, Mr. Donald Farrell and the Lead Coalition of Delaware, who's doing a lot of advocacy around this issue, who has been making a lot of noise. Um, also to a few of the school board members, uh, who have, uh, been working on this issue on a school district level. Um, and even some of our state representatives who are looking to address this issue. Um, so thank you, and that was like a mic drop. You hit on a lot of the points that I was going to say, um, about lead poison and the impacts it's going to have on our kids and how city council needs to make a statement. It says, as a city, as a council, we are not accepting of this, and there needs to be a change, and we support that change. Thank you.
Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I want to say that I, I too, um, want to thank all of the health advocates that have been involved with this topic. It has been one that, uh, since it has been exposed, there has been a lot of communication around it. It's been a lot of, um, individuals that have been involved in terms of the advocacy, um, individuals going down to the General Assembly to speak on behalf of the children and the families. Um, I do appreciate our council member for sponsoring this resolution. Uh, but Dr. Amy Rowe, I don't know if, uh, council members have been keeping up with it, but she's been emailing us, she's been keeping us abreast of all the, the progress also that has been made around this topic. Um, as, um, Mr. Donald Farrell has shared, um, there's, uh, even individuals as himself um, that have even, um, put out petitions, um, to get signatures from different, um, people in the community, different civic associations, specifically the fourth district civic association, to get signatures to help to push this cause forward down at the General Assembly. And I don't think that there's any, um, one of us, any of my council colleagues that feel as though that correcting this problem, you know, is not the right thing to do. I believe we all know that, you know, with the, well, based on the reports, the consequences of, of the lead, um, even some individuals, some families, they are even offering home remediation, um, because of it. And, um, there's a number of, of, of individuals and, and, uh, service centers that are actually doing lead testing and things of that nature. Um, the Hudson State Service Center, the Porta State Service Center. So if you know of any individuals or families that, um, have been impacted, it is, it is serious and it is something that we really need to focus on. And John Smiley, um, he's someone that, you know, we can reach out to as well, um, 283-7145. Um, and he can give us more information around this in terms of Newcastle County because they have different individuals that you can contact for Newcastle County, Kent County, and Sussex. But, uh, John Smiley will be a big help, 302-283-7145, if you have any other questions as it relates to where you can get tested and where this thing is at this point in time. So for that reason, I will be, uh, supporting this resolution tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracy.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to add, um, some sentiments along with what, um, Councilwoman Harley has said. Um, traditionally and historically, the federal government has provided the dollars for lead remediation. And I do want to acknowledge Governor Carney and his administration as he has proposed in his budget, budget a couple of months ago, the largest, um, influx of cash into lead remediation, detection, and prevention. Um, so I do want to recognize that the, uh, General Assembly and the administration are well aware of the challenges, the issue, and that they are working on this. So although I do support us sending this resolution down to make a statement um, about the importance of lead remediation in schools, I do think that there's a challenge that city council and the city should really be having a conversation around how we, as a city, are addressing the very issue that the public commenter made around lead in homes. Uh, that is really where we need to be spending some time. And I think once we, uh, finish with this conversation, we really should start to look at how we're working with the state, the Department of Health and Social Services, um, the EPA, and others to make sure that we're bringing dollars into the city that can help homeowners, uh, with lead remediation. And that's one way that we can really be protecting our kids. I do support this and I do thank the, the sponsor. Um, and I hope that we can really work on lead remediation in homes. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley.
If I'm next, I don't know, if someone else had their hand up.
Did you want to go? Go ahead, Mr. Councilman White, and then.
Councilman White, uh, you know, the gentleman said there's no safe levels of lead poisoning. He's absolutely correct. And there's not, there's never too much advocacy for the protection of our children regarding health. And I agree with Councilwoman, uh, Bracy that I would like the same attention to be shown to the issues that we have within the city with the same vigor. As a housing professional, um, most properties, the lead is not in the paint after, it's in the solder. And then we all know that we have homes of, uh, of, of that age that people have used leads, lead solder, and that causes the leaching of the water when you turn on the faucet. So, uh, I, I, I would agree that, um, if, and I'm in favor of this resolution, but I'm also in more, uh, inclined to support, uh, similar, uh, not legislation, but, I mean, not resolution, but legislation that points the finger back at us. And I commend the councilwoman for taking this, 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 this charge. But I too would say, uh, in support of this, council needs to do a deep dive at, at our own ills within the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman White. Councilmember Harley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add that, um, that was one, one of the reasons why I mentioned that, um, we need to read our emails. Dr. Amy Rowe, um, her and her team, they have shared a slew of information um, with city council as it relates to this whole topic and all the research um, that has been done a, around this, uh, this particular topic and, and what the state is doing, the money that has been allocated. And if I am not mistaken, I, I believe the city of Wilmington is codified as it relates to, um, lead poisoning and, and that whole topic. So I just want to say that what we may need to do is check the Muni code um, as it relates to the city, to see what our code says. And then, um, keep our eye on what's happening, um, down at the General Assembly and, 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 and work together and make sure that we understand what our code, um, currently states um, as we keep our eye on it to know what we as city residents need to do. Thank you, I'm Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Harley. I too am in support of this resolution and the comments. I concur with, uh, what my council colleagues have shared. I do remember when, um, and this still should be in place, the Deed Lead Delaware Program. My son actually worked for that program. And, but there's still a lot of lead in these old homes. This is an old city, um, and that definitely should be a priority. And the other thing is, as we send resolutions, because I myself am sponsoring resolutions for different things that we sent to Dover, that the most effective way to really reach our, um, our delegation is to sit, meet with them, call them, uh, go down to Dover whenever you get a chance and get in their face and really, uh, let them know and what you're, you know, the people that you are representing, uh, be their voice um, so that we can move things along and focus on these issues that are so important for our children. Um, at this point, I don't see any other hands, and I will turn it back to the sponsor.
Yes, thank you, um, everyone for your support, my council colleagues from the community. Um, so, um, Amy Rowe came to the last, the committee meeting. Um, so if you're watching the playbacks for the last committee, you will see that Amy Rowe is there. She's in support of this legislation. Me and her had several back and forth conversations. My nonprofit, Black Mothers in Power, is a part of the coalition. We signed on to the letters and it's support, so we get all of the emails and information about what's going on with the advocacy, advocacy stuff with Lead Free Delaware. Also, Newcastle County has a lead program that includes city of Wilmington residents. I actually had an assessment done, there was lead detected. And Newcastle County will come out to your home and do a program where they'll remove it. Um, but also in pointing the finger back to the city, it's going to cost money, right? If we're talking about having initiatives and funds to either partner with Newcastle County or do a program of our own for lead detection, for testing and remediation. Um, and I think it's an important part to note, like, if the $2 million for the Housing Opportunity Fund, um, from the budget is in the budget, then we can use that money to support initiatives that's already happening or to create our own lead program. So I hope that as a city council, we can advocate that, that $2 million, um, budget line for the Housing Opportunity Fund is, um, in there so that we can have these conversations because everything costs money. So, um, thank you again, everyone, for your support, and I'm ready to get to the vote.
Clerk, please call for the rule.
Councilman White.
Yea.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yea.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Yes.
President Pro-Tent Cabrera.
Yes.
Eleven yeas and two absent.
Declare, it's been, uh, declared adopted.
President, I have a, I have a motion to present at this time.
Go ahead, proceed, Councilmember Darby.
I move to have substitute number one to ordinance number 21 dash 024, um, revision one, agenda number 0057, be placed on the April 20th, 2023 council agenda.
Okay, the motion has been, uh, received. All those in favor, see, well, I need a second. Can someone please second? The motion is to substitute ordinance number 21 dash 024 to be placed on the April 20th council agenda.
What's the agenda item number?
The agenda item is 21 dash 024.
What is the synopsis?
Can you expand?
I don't have it with me. The sponsor can.
Go ahead, Councilmember Darby, can you please elaborate?
Point of order, Madam Chair. You've called for a motion, second on the motion.
Yes.
There can be no discussion until you get, get the second on the motion.
Yeah, I need a second and then we can.
What's the item first of all?
She called for a motion. She said the item.
I don't see it on here.
It was previously. It was previously, previously on two agendas and it had been moved, but we didn't go forward with it. So now, in order to bring it back, we have to actually.
Madam Chair, point of order, you called for a second on the motion.
Our parliamentarian is checking on something.
Madam Chair, you've called for a second on the motion.
Our parliamentarian is looking into something right now before we proceed. The legislation is in ordinance to amend chapter five of the city code to require buyers of residential rental properties to pay business license fees at property settlement. That's agenda item 21 dash 024.
Council of President, uh, this is, uh.
Go ahead, Councilman Johnson.
Uh, I, I lost signal. I had meant to second the motion.
Okay, it has been properly.
If it, if it may be placed back on the table.
Yes.
Madam Chair, point of order, I'd like to know the resolution of the research for the parliamentarian on the question. She didn't get a second.
Councilman Johnson, just second it.
So the question regarding the second stays open until you get a second? Question on the, on the, on the motion then, what does, what does Robert Rules, uh, say regarding motions being second? Since you're done, since you were researching, please read to, to me what that. I'm sorry, you'll have to bear with me. Well, we waited this long for a second. We, I don't think there's a problem, waiting for clarification.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just, I need to know for understanding, um, I don't even see it on the agenda that I have. Are you saying that it's on a different agenda? That's number one, and number two, how can we vote on something?
Madam Chair, point of order, there can be no discussion until we get this matter resolved. resolved.
If that's the order, no problem.
If I may, council rule number nine, ordinances, an ordinance that's appeared on the agenda for a third and final reading at two previous meetings of council without its sponsor moving for its consideration, shall not there be, thereafter, be placed on the agenda for consideration at another meeting except by a majority vote of members present at a meeting preceding the meeting for which agenda listing is sought. So that's, that's why it's not on the agenda, the council person has moved it be considered the next agenda, so the April 20th meeting of council, and now I'm gonna try and find the answer for Councilman White.
All right, well, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
To the public, please bear with us as we want to make sure that these matters are handled appropriately.
Correct.
Thank you for your patience.
So a member makes the motion, another member seconds the motion, chair states the question on the motion, which would be seeking a vote. Could you repeat your, your question, Councilman White? Thank you, parliamentarian, my question is simply, there was a motion made, it was not seconded, does the motion stay open until you get a second, or is the motion tabled for the fact for the lack of a second? So Roberts rules 410, if, if no member seconds the motion, the chair must be sure that all have heard it before proceeding to other business. In such case, the chair normally asks, is there a second to the motion? In a large hall, he may repeat the motion before doing so, or if a resolution was submitted in writing to be read by the chair or secretary, not applicable here, is there a second to the resolution? Bear with me.
Madam Chair, point of order, clearly the pandemic version of Roberts rules would allow for the technical delay in Chris hearing, as far as I'm concerned, there was a motion made properly seconded by Councilman Johnson, I think we can move on, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Spadola. At this point, it was first and second, even though there was a delay because there was a question, because you did not see it on the agenda, now we understand why it wasn't on the agenda.
Madam Chair, point of order, I respect Councilman James Spadola's comment, but he's not the parliamentarian, so, so the fact that he's saying to move over, move on is not enough, at least in this council man, so I want to hear with the final.
I'm going by why the parliamentarian is saying, and I haven't moved on yet, I'm letting him finish, but I.
Just responding to the councilman's comments about, we should just move on. So if, if no second had been received, the chair may ask, the motion has not been seconded, since there's no second motion, it is not before the meeting, then he immediately says the next item of business, so the council president had not, President Pro Temp had not moved to the next item on the agenda, so the floor was still open for the second. Thank you for the clarification, parliamentarian. You're welcome.
Okay, on the question. Councilmember Darby, you may proceed, now that it's been properly moved and seconded.
Yeah, that's fine, though my screen locked, as I'm listening, I was unlocking it, no, thank you, so.
Any other council members can comment after the sponsor speaks first.
Yeah, so this legislation is just, it was on the agenda twice, I think the second time, it was a misunderstanding of it being on the agenda, but just to go by rules, we're just following, going through the motions, and it will be on the next council meeting for a vote. It's about business settlements, being able to collect business license at business, at the settlement option at the closing of purchasing a home that you're gonna be using for a rental unit, and I guess we'll have more discussion about it now or at the next committee meeting, or the next council meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields. Councilmember Fields, you had your hand up.
She put it down now.
Okay, not seeing any hand, Councilmember Harley?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I think it's very important that when we have different types of scenarios for us to get an understanding, I, I just want to say for the record that that was the reason for the pausing, for the questions, because I, I was sitting here looking for this item on the agenda, and I also think that is good for the public, for us to make sure that we're clear on what's happening and what we're doing, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harley, and I'm glad our parliamentarian was able to clarify that as to why it was not on the agenda. Any other council members? Okay, not hearing any, we can move on to the vote.
I don't think there's a vote.
There is a motion.
So back, back to rule nine, in order for it to be, appear on the next agenda, it must be, except, it must be voted, accepted by a majority vote of the members present at the meeting preceding the meeting for which the agenda listing is sought, so that would be a meeting, that would be a, a majority of those present in tonight's meeting.
Clerk, call for the roll. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Nay, on the motion.
I'm so confused.
Motion carried.
Madam Chair, just for clarity, I thought we were doing roll call votes.
Come on, y'all, she called a majority, a voice vote, that's what she did, just for clarity.
You majority the vote, we only had one nay, which was you, everybody else was yay.
I understand, I, I just thought the rules were that we're doing voice votes, that's all.
Point of order, I mean, he can call for a roll, I mean, a voice vote if he wanted to, I mean, I don't think, I'm just saying the way, did you call for it?
No, I.
No, I didn't, I didn't call for a voice vote.
No, I'm not calling for another vote, I just thought we were calling for roll call votes.
Okay, at this time, we are going to proceed, Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, thank you. Madam President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 23017, Agenda 0290, whereas pursuant to City Charter, section 1101, the City of Wilmington may acquire, hold, manage and dispose of property in such terms as it deems proper for any municipal purpose.
I move this resolution be received, recorded and filed, adopted by a yea and nay vote.
It has been properly moved, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded, the resolution be received, recorded and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote, on the question.
Yes, Madam President, this resolution approves the grant of lease interest in 1108 East 12th Street, 1110, 1112, 1114, 1116, 1120, and that's East 10th Street, and 1125 Brandywine Street, 1127 Brandywine Street, Delaware Center Horticulture for the use of community gardening, this is already currently there, and they just renewed their lease with the City of Wilmington, and that's the Eric Robertson Garden, over 11th Street Bridge, going towards Gander Hill to the right.
Thank you. Councilmember Darby? Hand up or hand down?
I'm sorry, hand down, it was an accident.
Any council members, any comments? Okay. Clerk will call for the roll.
Councilman White.
Yea, on the motion.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields. Councilwoman Fields. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Cabrera.
Yes.
Ten yeas and three absent.
Councilwoman Fields, yes, I'm sorry, my, my, my link is just wrong, sorry.
No, it's already been adopted, thank you, Councilmember Harley, I mean, Councilmember Fields, but it's already been adopted. Moving on to Councilmember Harley.
Oh, yes, Madam President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance 23015, Agenda 0291, in ordinance to amend chapter 44 of the city code to provide a property tax exemption for low to moderate income, low term homeowners following a 50% or more property tax increase on their primary residence.
First reading of the ordinance.
In ordinance to amend chapter 44 of the city code to provide a property tax exemption for low to moderate income, low term homeowners following a 50% or more property tax increase on their primary residence.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Madam President, I move that it be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Can someone second?
Second.
Thank you, it's been properly moved and seconded, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Councilmember Johnson has legislation which Councilman Mills will be presenting on his behalf.
Yes, Madam President, resolution to present on behalf of Councilman Johnson.
Resolution 23018, revision one, Agenda 0292, whereas under the Downtown Development District Act 22 Delaware C101, et cetera, the State of Delaware may designate districts within the state's cities, towns and uncorated areas that will qualify for significant development incentives and other state benefits.
I move this resolution be received, recorded and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Can we get a second? Thank you.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded, the resolution be received, recorded and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote, on the question.
Yes, Madam President, this resolution is being presented by council to review and approve the resolution requested the state to either increase the total allowable size of downtown development in jurisdictions having over 30,000 residents to 375 acres. Thank you.
Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, first of all, I want to say, congratulations to Councilmember Mills and to the co-sponsors, and I would like to be added as a co-sponsor as well.
This is, this is the one for, for Johnson.
She said Johnson.
Johnson. Now, this point, that.
Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, I just wanted to clear, this is not the same resolution from Councilman Mills from last week, now, can I make clarity, Councilman Johnson is trying to put in something for his district, which to my understanding, the state legislators are not in favor of, so I just wanted to put that out there, am I right, Councilman Mills?
I would just have to present this on behalf of.
Yeah, Councilmember, yeah, Johnson is presenting this, Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, so, as a point of clarity, this is a, this is needed to send to the General Assembly, so, there's a lot of backstory to how downtown development districts have expanded, the program originally started in 2013, there's jurisdictions throughout the state have downtown development districts, part of the point is just for economic development in districts, and Wilmington is looking to expand, and we're currently expanding up North Market, which you're gonna see in our next agenda item, and that's been supported by Senator Darius Brown and Al Mills, now what we're really looking to do long-term is, we need to spur development west of 95, which the city is looking to do so we can continue to invest in our smaller minority-owned businesses west of 95, so, there's a lot of work we have to do at the state level, it does have support from the local legislators on the west side, and it's something that we'll be advocating for with the governor's office and moving towards expansion in the district, but we're totally in favor of the expansion on the east side of North Market, we're excited to see where that goes, and we humbly ask for your support to expand development west of 95 as well, in, in the future, thank you.
Councilmember Harley, if you would like to continue or.
So, okay, so, thank you, Madam Chair, I, yeah, okay, so, this is a resolution to increase the maximum size for downtown, so this is a resolution, so I, I, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Fields.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm, I guess my question is, this resolution that Councilman Johnson is bringing up, it has nothing to do with, and, and/or it does not affect the DDD that Councilman Mills put in place, am I, I mean, this is a question, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, yes, you would be correct.
Okay, so the, can I ask another, can I follow up?
Yes, you may.
So these are two separate DDD concerns, am I correct?
Councilman Johnson, you may proceed, we didn't, I mean, at this point, you could have presented a resolution, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, 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 at this point, the point is that Wilmington, we're making great use of the economic development activity, and the state tax are maximum acreage, so we need more, that's simply it, we're, we're using it on the east side, we're using it up the north side, we are doing a lot of great work, so, the point is, we need more acreage for us to work on 4th Street, 2nd Street, out Maryland Avenue, all the neighborhoods on the west side.
May I follow up, Madam Chair?
Yes, you may.
I did speak to some of the legislators in Dover, and they are in favor of the west side, part of 95, the others, the west side part of 95, expanding the acreage and the number, so I'm, I'm in full of support of the resolution, it is a part of my district, however, the DDD that Councilman Mills is, has brought up, that also affects the east side of my district, which is western of City Quaker Hill, so I have a part in both DDD, so I'm hoping that my council members understand that with both of these, with this resolution, that means our, our black and brown community will be a part of a DDD, which, which enables us to receive more funding for our entrepreneurs within our district, so I'm hoping that they will support it, I don't think that, you know, I don't know anybody else against it, but maybe that's, maybe that's just my thing, so other than that, I am going to support the resolution, both, I support both of them because both of them affect my district in a, in a whole, because everybody knows 95 does support, separate my district, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fields, Councilmember Harley?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I do appreciate Councilmember Fields' comments that she just made, it allowed me to say what I was gonna say initially, and that is this, having a district that has two of these districts, these DDDs, is that what they're called?
DDDs.
Okay, so, yeah, DDDs, so, having two of them, I definitely know the benefit and the value that they add to a community, I don't know all the intricacies of all this back and forth that's going on, but I do know that if there is a district that does not have one, that it will benefit the community, it will add value to the community, and most of all, the businesses, the businesses within a, a, a district that has a DDD, it, it opens them up to so much funding, as it relates to removing blight, as it relates to giving them funding in terms of helping them to, to move the needle with their economic engine, so, again, there is, is, I mean, there's nothing but a benefit to the districts when they are, are a part of a downtown development district, so, I'm, I'm in support of it for the mere fact that if the community can benefit from it, and the community is gonna receive the, the, the businesses are adding value, and the community is benefiting from it, then it's a win-win.
Thank you, Councilmember Harley, Councilmember Oliver?
Thank you, Madam President, I never got, we're sitting over here laughing because I never even finished my statement before everybody went left, the bottom line is, I'm supportive of this, I was just making a statement that if you, I've looked at council, well, I'm gonna stick with, first of all, we need to be, stand on Agenda 0292, and I support it, that's all I have to say, thank you.
I, I will also speak to it, when these DDDs were created, there are certain rules and guidelines that have to be followed and that they have to be continuous, that you cannot have a separation, if this was brought to the west side, then there would be a separation from the DDD, and what is, and sticking to the item, I won't speak to the second one yet, but this is being added in addition to consider the west side of Wilmington to be added as a DDD, which. to be added as a DDD, which we're asking, the resolution's asking that those original rules be changed or amended. The, the benefit of a DDD is that you do get a twenty percent federal monies returned to those businesses. Um, the, it's just an investment in community. It's not a bad thing whether, uh, it happens or not, and our delegation, our state-led, led, delegation is in favor. Um, so I am also in support of it. Okay. Not seeing any other hands. Um, we are on, we're going to, uh, call for the roll.
Councilman White. Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy. Pro Tem Cabrera.
Yes.
Eleven yays and two absents.
It has been declared and adopted. Councilmember Mills?
Yes, Madam President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-three zero nineteen, Revision one to Agenda zero two nine three, whereas under the Downtown Development District Act twenty-two Delaware C et cetera, the State of Delaware may designate districts within the state's cities, towns, and uncoordinated areas that will qualify for significant development incentives and other state benefits. And whereas.
Move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed, and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second on the motion.
It has been properly moved in second. The resolution be received, recorded, and filed, and adopted by a yea and nay vote. On the question.
Yes.
This resolution is being presented by the administration and council approval. The resolution supports the submission of the city's proposed amendment to expand the boundaries of the city's downtown development district from two four nine point four six to two six four point zero one acres.
Councilman, Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes, thank you. I'm sticking to Agenda item oh two nine three. I'm glad to be a sponsor of this, um, which is overdue, and this has nothing to do with the west side. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Harley?
Thank you, um, Madam Chair. I already said what I, I needed to say as it relates to, um, my support for downtown, downtown development districts. Again, they, I, I feel as though every area in the City of Wilmington should have a downtown district, um, if it's a corridor that has businesses, um, that, that, um, are a part of a community. So I'm really happy to see this, uh, resolution, and as I shared, um, earlier, having two, um, the, uh, two ordinances with development districts, the Riverfront and downtown. I just feel as though every area in the City of Wilmington, like I said, should be able to, um, every business should be able to receive that funding to be able to add to their community. So I'm excited about it, and I would like to be added as a co-sponsor as well. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Uh, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor as well. This is, uh, as Councilmember Harley said, this is, uh, groundbreaking, and it's exciting. Um, just to, as a point of reference, every, other cities have downtown development districts. Seaford has one, Dover has them, uh, Newark, uh, there's other small towns in Delaware. But nobody has used and invested in the program like Wilmington has. And that's part of why we're advocating, um, expanding it, because, you know, we've made great work, uh, the amount of small businesses and minority businesses that we've supported as a city. So, uh, hats off to Councilmember Mills. This is his first big win, and I'm excited for the, all the businesses we're going to be having, uh, expanding up North Market, and, um, it is, this is, uh, will, uh, make long-lasting change for the city. So thank you.
Comment on the motion.
Councilman White?
I support the Resolution oh two nine three. Um, little background, I, I assisted in the writing of the Downtown Development District Regulations thirteen years ago. Uh, some districts have, have benefited wholly, and that would be, uh, Councilwoman Harley's district, and that was what it was written for, to spur growth. It has done that. Uh, what it hasn't done, uh, which is what Councilman Mills' legislation is, will not only expand the down, the district, the businesses between, uh, in the first, second, and third, but this piece of legislation will add to some homeownerships extending to the east of, uh, Market Street, which is that we, uh, that was not a strong point in, um, in the earlier legislations. So I commend the councilmen. I commend the State of Delaware, the, uh, vision of planning and, uh, se-, and Representative, Senator Brown for this initiative. But let's be perfectly clear, we can't have everything we want. The word, the, when we wrote the legislation to be contiguous, then that was a part of a strategy that we understood that when you have contiguous areas, they will spur growth faster than leaping over growth. And that comes from consolidating of infrastructure, comes from consolidating of permitting, it comes from consolidating of a lot of uses. So, uh, again, thank you, Councilman Mills and, and, and the administration for having the vision and foresight to put this legislation up.
Councilmember Bracy, and then Councilmember Fields.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thanks.
Fully noted. Councilmember Fields?
Yes, I'd like to be, um, added as a co-sponsor, and I would just like to comment that it doesn't matter what side of town it's on, it's just, it just matters how we grow as a city. Um, and, uh, we are developing and becoming one of the great places in the State of Delaware. Thank you.
Madam.
Councilman Spadola?
Please add me as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. I too would like, Councilmember Oliver?
No, um, I was just making clarity. When Councilman Field said this goes to the west, I was just trying to make clarity because I'm looking at the map, and I was in a meeting. It has nothing to do. So I was just making clarity, so she wasn't confused. That's all it was. Thank you.
Fully noted.
Call for question.
I too would like to be added, uh, as a co-sponsor, um, as we are also looking at the west side that does have a business district, both on Union Street, on Fourth Street, a lot of businesses there, and a lot of, um, homeownership that we're trying to promote to get the necessary funding. It's not a loss to anyone. If we ask for more, we may not get it, as Councilman White alluded to, but, um, it doesn't hurt to try. So I too would like to be added as a sponsor. If you could note for both of those, um, the last two. And Councilman Mills, you have the last word.
I would just want to say thank you to all colleagues for your, uh, support. Uh, thank you to Director Starkey. Thank you to Senator Brown. Thank you to State Rep Namdi and all the council people past and present who have supported this, and there was a lot of work that went into this, and I, I, I'm sure the residents are going to benefit. You know, Market Street hasn't been a neglected business corridor for years, and this free investment is going to, going to do make, do wonders in our community. I think the impact will be limitless, and thank you all again.
Thank you. Clerk, call for the roll.
Yeah, Councilman White.
Yea.
Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields. Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Can I be counted as yes? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Fields, can I be counted as yes, please?
Yeah.
Can I be, may I please be excused?
Yes, you may.
Councilwoman Bracy. Pro Tem Cabrera.
Yes.
That's ten yays and three absents.
It is declared, adopted.
Madam Chair, may I please be excused?
Do we have seven?
There's a quorum.
Is Councilman Johnson still on? And Councilman, and Councilwoman, okay. Yes, you may. And no one else can leave until the meeting is over. We need to have a quorum. Don't make me use, don't make me use my gavel. Uh, Councilmember Spadola?
Madam President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance twenty-three zero sixteen, Agenda zero two nine four, in ordinance to amend Chapter thirty-seven of the City Code to require the Department of Finance to prominently display statute on parking violation notices and notify parking violation recipients of their right to appeal.
First reading of the ordinance.
In ordinance to amend Chapter thirty-seven of the City Code to require Department of Finance to prominently display statute on parking violation notices and notify parking violation recipients of their right to appeal.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Madam President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Can we get a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved in second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Without any more, uh, legislative business, we are now moving on to petitions and communications. We're going to start with Councilman White.
No petitions or communications at this time.
Councilmember Darby. Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, I'd like to, um, thank everybody, uh, for, we're, we're off tomorrow and Monday, so we have a long weekend. Um, I did have some petitions and communications, and my mind is blank. Um, Madam President, um, you did a great job tonight, and I'd like to be excused. I left my information upstairs.
I still need you to hang around. Thank you. We need to have a quorum. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Harley?
So at this time, um, um, Madam Chair, I just want to mention that, um, there's going to be a food distribution. Um, I'm partnering with, uh, the CGM CDC, uh, to distribute free food to families. In addition to food, um, families will have an access to clothing and home goods, and it will be the last Saturday of every month from twelve until two. And the location where, um, individuals can bring their own bag or cart will be eight fifty North Church Street. And again, that's a food distribution, and, um, individuals will also have access to clothing. I'm partnering with a CDC, and I'm just looking forward to those that need, have needs, um, as it relates to food and possibly clothing to take advantage of that opportunity. And I want to say Happy Resurrection Sunday to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
I have, I have no items tonight, Madam President. Thank you.
Councilman Field?
Yes, I want to make mention of the First Annual Charlie Square Five K, which will take place on Saturday, April twenty-second at nine o'clock outside of Charlie Square Tap House. It's going to be a really fun event to raise money for charity, and I encourage anybody that's interested to come out and join. Thanks. Nine o'clock.
Thank you. Councilman Mills?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to say, um, thank, first of all, thank you to the, the, the young ladies from the Northeast Resilient Team for the work they're doing. That's, uh, it's definitely something that was needed in the community. And secondly, just, um, say to the children and the families, be out of school next week, to just have a happy and safe Easter break. And, and say a special shout-out to my, to my granddaughter that's here visiting, uh, for the week. Hello, Amari.
There you go. Her name was said on TV.
Thank you.
And, let's see. Councilman Spadola?
I just want to commend the substitute council president on a job well done.
Thank you. I'll tie baptism by fire.
Where's my tomatoes when I need them?
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I would like to make, uh, an announcement that the Roberto Clemente League had rescheduled their Easter egg hunt because of the rains last, uh, Saturday, so it will take place this coming Saturday at Woodlawn Park between eleven AM and two PM. Uh, the opening for the Roberto Clemente League was delayed because, um, we need to recruit more students, more, uh, players. So please get this out in your community, uh, come out and play with the Roberto Clemente League. Uh, it is a wonderful experience for your young people to participate in those sports. It's wholesome. Um, and also want to announce that we have our budget hearings taking place every Monday and Wednesday. And this coming Monday, April tenth, the mayor's office, city treasurer's office, and Wilmington City Council will have their budget hearings, and they begin at four thirty PM. Uh, on Wednesday, we have Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting, virtual meeting with an, oh, that's not it. Wednesday, April twelfth, we have Public Works and the presentation of the Water Sewer Fund. Um, these meetings take place four thirty. That's Wednesday, April twelfth. And we will be meeting here in the chambers, and there will be, uh, an anchor location where you can join us virtually. So we do, uh, ask everyone to please, uh, join in and participate. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. It has been properly moved in second, and, um, this meeting has ended. Thank you all who joined us, and I just want to hit the gavel one more time. It's over.